They're each divisions. Now it's like it's all park. And then you have a region you're in charge of, so.
How's it going?
You look nice.
Thanks.
Wow, check you out. Keeping it classy.
Trying.
Okay, I don't know what that is, but it sounds important.
Okay, the municipal planning commission for February 8th will now come to order. Ms. Blanken, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Starr.
Here.
Mr. Sawyers.
Here.
Mrs. Ellsworth.
Here.
Mr. Hawkins.
Here.
Mr. Swallow.
Here.
Mr. Deal. Mr. West. We do have a quorum.
Thank you. Just before we begin on the proceedings, as a matter of practice, I wanted to read this following statement. As a reminder to all here today, the purpose of the municipal planning commission is to balance the public good with the private property rights and interests. Also, the commission carries out all other powers and duties conferred upon it by the city of Mount Vernon's zoning ordinance or other city ordinances and the laws of the state of Ohio. This is a public meeting, and there are rules of decorum that we follow. Number one, we are committed to the democratic process, individual rights of expression, robust debate, and tolerance for different viewpoints. Number two, the following general rules of civility are expected, including: addressing others in a respectful manner, no insulting, personal attacks, intimidating or offensive communications, no harassment, no willful destruction or damage of property, and no disruptive behavior. Please silence all cell phones if you have them. If you need to, also refrain from private conversations during the meeting. If you need to come and go throughout the meeting, please do so in the least disruptive manner possible. If you are going to be offering public comment today, you must first be sworn in by reading the statement that we have at the lectern. And we will ask that you keep your comments to four minutes, with the exception of the presentations that we will be having. And we may have questions as well as from the commission. Again, the purpose of this commission is to oversee that the law is followed and planning concurs within which the spirit of those laws and regulations have been adopted by the city of Mount Vernon and the state of Ohio. So with that, we have the call to order. We went through that. Commission members, you see in your packets there were the municipal planning commission meeting minutes from January the 11th. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, we'll assume that they are, by consensus, they are as acceptable. Is there a motion to approve?
It's been moved and seconded.
It's been moved and seconded for the approval of the meeting minutes from January 11th. Any discussion? And all those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. They are approved. We have one item on today's business, and that is the parcel up on Upper Gilchrist Road. Mrs. Blanken, will you read the item, and then we will begin the process?
2024 MPC 03 Upper Gilchrist Road Parcel Number 71-0005.000. A comprehensive development plan.
Thank you. And who is going to be presenting on this? You would come up, state your name, swear in. We will turn this over to you then.
My name is Patrick Mackey. Lemon Development, 811 South Main Street, North Canton, Ohio 44720. I affirm that my testimony is truthful to the best of my knowledge and abilities, so help me God, or under penalty of perjury.
Thank you, Mr. Mackey. Yours.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Well, it's good to see you all again. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you once again to discuss our second potential project in Mount Vernon. As you're aware, today's discussion is a follow-up to our fall meeting regarding the zoning amendment. Fortunately, in November of 2023, the city council adopted the ordinance amending zoning regulations. With the zoning now amended to a planned neighborhood district, I'm now requesting approval for our development plan. Before delving into the specifics of our proposal, I'd like to provide a brief overview of our organization, Lemon Development. Started in 1976 by our founder, Bill Lemon, our development experience includes residential land development, retail, multifamily, and senior living projects throughout northeastern and central Ohio. Specifically, in senior living, since 1997, Lemon has developed 23 senior living projects and over 2,300 senior living units. As I mentioned earlier, this would be our second project in Mount Vernon. Our first community was the Danbury Mount Vernon on Venture Drive. Open in September of 2022, the community includes a 71,000-square-foot residential care facility and seven independent living villas. Now turn to our current proposal. The community will encompass 156 units spread across 31 residential buildings, targeted towards individuals with age 55 and above. The community will offer duplex and quadplex villas, six-unit villas, and eight-unit single-story apartments. Unit sizes will range from approximately 700-square-foot one-bedroom apartments to 1,300-square-foot two-bedroom villas, each equipped with garage access. The projected development and construction costs for the community will fall within the range of $30 to $32 million, with estimated rents averaging around $1.75 per square foot. So that would have rent range from about $1,000 to $2,300 a month. Currently, our community amenities are set to include a clubhouse, walking path, and pickleball court. Brookwood Management, our affiliated company, will assume the role as property manager. Brookwood currently manages nearly 1,500 multifamily units. All roads within the community will be private. Per the approval process requirements, our submitted plans include more detail than was previously shared. However, overall plans have not changed drastically from the preliminary plans you first saw in October. Some notable changes include an additional stormwater management basin on the north part of the parcel. Added, we added a walking path connecting the eastern part of the parcel to the western. And to address some of the concerns raised during the zoning amendment phase, our landscaping plans have increased buffering for the residents to the east and northwest. Visually, our design partners at GBC have assembled a comprehensive packet showcasing varied elevations and designs for all units, ensuring aesthetically pleasing and diverse community. Moving forward, pending the necessary approvals, the project will likely unfold in two phases. Next, I'll have John Walsh with GBC Design walk you through the plans and development standards. And I'll be available for any questions afterwards.
Right. John, if you will come up and read the statement, that'd be great.
Good afternoon. My name is John Walsh with GBC Design, 565 White Pond Drive, Akron, Ohio 44320.
Thank you.
I affirm that the testimony is truthful to the best of my knowledge and abilities, so help me God, or under penalty of perjury.
Welcome.
Welcome. Glad to have the opportunity to follow Patrick here and show you the plan. I guess a question, has all the members seen the actual packet with the building elevations and all that?
Well, we sent through, to us through municipal planning commission. Is it any different than that?
No. I just, I was making sure everybody's seen. And in the packet was, you know, representation of the duplex units, the architectural theme that we're talking about for the two-unit and four-unit buildings. There's a representation of the, of those, there's 108 units, what we call villas or attached villa units. The other style is an eight-unit building. That's the quad. Keep going, one more. Right there. And those are the ones that are a little smaller in footprint. But kind of the unique thing that we started to do with this project and the other project, we used to have parking garages. And off, you know, where you'd have to walk to the unit. We've been able to connect most of the garages with a direct entry into the, because we're from Akron. We get a little more snow than you guys do, but not, not, still kind of miserable in the wintertime, other than this week of weather we've had this week, which makes me want to move back down to Hilton Head or something. It's a little warmer. But the big feature is having direct access for half of those folks directly into the unit from the garage. As Patrick had mentioned, we have a clubhouse. I think the last slide was a picture of the clubhouse. And the drawing kind of maybe indicates a pool. It's really going to be pickleball courts, so. The intent is, you know, when we get into it, the final design will meet all of the city requirements. Patrick said the roads will be private. The other utilities hopefully will be public. We do have some walking trails around there. And really, really a lot of green space and buffering around the perimeter. As part of the submittal package, we did a statement of development standards. I don't know if you want me to go through those item by item, or if we just enter that, whatever your pleasure is.
You may.
We go through.
Briefly.
I'm gonna do the.
Yeah, the Reader's Digest.
The Cliff Notes or the Reader's Digest version of it. So lot areas, it's really all one, one big lot. We're not doing fee simple lots or separating, and so it's going to stay on one. The building arrangement provides for open space behind the buildings, and the plan meets the required building separation. The density of development is 4.6 units an acre. The maximum is five units an acre, so we're underneath that. Then one talks about single-family development standards. This is a multifamily, so that is not applicable. Next is building height. The maximum is 30 feet, which is intended for a multi-story building. I assume we are, the maximum is 21 feet or 24 feet for the apartments, just because of the, mostly, we don't, we don't like to do 412 pitches. They're a little steeper pitch roof to make it a little more aesthetically pleasing on that. We meet the minimum square footage requirements. Parking, we have more than adequate parking on here. Most of the, most of the villa units will have a two-car garage and then two spaces in front. And the apartments will have a one-car garage with at least one spot in front, and then some extra parking, overflow parking for guests and events. The overall number of units, as we stated, is 108 villa units and 48 apartments. The code permits a non-residential use. We don't, do not have a non-residential use, so that's not applicable. Phasing, it probably will be in phasing. I don't know that we've determined the exact amount. I don't know if that's critical for your review to have that, but it's, it probably will be at least a two-phased project. Traffic patterns, I think our traffic patterns and parking in, are shown on the plan and meet the code requirements. Trash, individual pickups from each unit. There's no plan to have dumpsters. So each person will have a trash can and wheel it out like most of, I assume that's what you do in Mount Vernon, is you, huh? Have individual, huh, collection, so. And then talks about complying with the incentives. That's really, I think, for additional open space and additional density incentives. We're not asking for any incentives for additional density other than what's permitted by code. Building design site should be high-quality, includes integration of buildings and structures, natural materials. I think that's represented by the elevations that we've shown you. Well-designed open space utilized by pedestrian and bike. Again, with the walkways, the clubhouse, the pickleball, and I'm sure there'll be additional items added beyond that. Land is provided for major community facilities or schools. I don't think this is applicable to that portion of the code. This is, like Patrick said, is geared to what, 55 and older? So hopefully, there's no additional children for the schools. And total density shall not exceed, in this case, eight units an acre, and we're not asking for that consideration. So I guess with that, both Patrick and I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Do you have any, anybody have any questions for John or Patrick?
Not this time.
Well, I'll jump in here. We had a staff report presented by our development services manager, and specifically looking at trash collection. Looks like you're referring to individual pickup. Guess I'd need more clarification on. Looks like Code 1173.15 regulates a refuse collection area for a multifamily residential use.
We, we can put in dumpsters if you like. It's not our preference, and it's, huh?
Some, can you pull the mic towards you a little bit?
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Some developments have them, some do not. And they have individual trash pickup, and so it's kind of.
If we were doing a multi-storyed apartment complex, we would have probably trash.
It's one of the questions that, like I said, like Mr. Sawyers said, it was one of those things that was, how many trash cans are going to be out there? Is it going to be one trash company that's coming through the area? Or is it going to be multiple? Because we allow, the city allows for different vendors.
So.
But it's going to be managed by Brookwood Management, and they'll, they'll select a vendor.
A vendor, okay, that's, that's, that's good. Okay, good.
And kind of piggybacking on that, are you proposing an HOA or a POA for this property?
Probably, probably not, because it's, they're all rental units.
Okay.
There's no ownership that would, huh?
That answers another question.
To homeowners. But, I mean, there'll be a whole set of documents as far as guidelines and standards for the rental agreements on, on what they can, can't do, and that.
And I think that's something to note for the community, is right now there's a concern for congestion of traffic. And what we don't want to do if we're having, you know, over 100 or so trash cans going out to the street, we don't want three, four, however many different servicers going out and running that through. So it's good to know that the management company will choose a single vendor, and they'll go in and handle the community.
They'll pick a vendor for snow removal in the wintertime. They'll pick a vendor for mowing the grass and landscape, you know? So it's a, it's a common maintenance, common appearance throughout the community.
So from the perspective of public services, it's good to know that, you know, we're keeping down that congestion. We're working on the roadways, and that's something good. Thank you.
Are you considering also, and it says you're not considering any of the economic development incentives like the CRA or the NCA? Is that something that, for the members of the audience, the CRA is a community reinvestment area, which is a tax-deferment of property improvements. And the NCA is a new community authority, which is another economic development tool that we use that adds mileage to that development to pay for infrastructure, so.
For both the NCA and tax payment, we've already been engaged with Jeff Cocky. Talk about that. My understanding is that process has changed recently. That's not, the CRA is no longer guaranteed. That's, I think, now negotiable. There's a process for that. So we're, we're still trying to understand that process. I understand, I think we would be the first organization to go through that.
Yeah.
So it's not something that, for right now, we don't know how to proceed with that process. That's why we didn't have it in here. But yeah, the intention is to absolutely go through with that and look at the NCA. We've been speaking with Jeff and our attorneys, and I believe it was Booker that set it up for you guys on that side. So those conversations are ongoing, but we understand the process has recently changed.
Yep. We have Mr. Philkins here, who's with the, I see you shaking your head. Yes, we're in process, in negotiation of how that, that whole process is going to work. So yeah. So these are all going to be rentals and no owner occupied, right?
Correct.
Okay. That answers another question. One other. Mrs. Blanken, you said there was a curve or there was an intersection that was, I'm having a hard time trying to find that.
Are you talking about the 90-degree asphalt corners?
Must be.
Yeah, so up here, these two top corners, they're squared off, and it doesn't look like that would be conducive to driving patterns. I doubt a vehicle is going to drive into that 90-degree in turn, so I think that might need to be.
Yeah, we would fill it, the square corners with a round corner.
Okay.
And if we need, we have a program that'll actually run a fire truck through and show how it tracks, make sure that it's accessible by, make sure it's accessible with the, with the fire apparatus.
Another question, mail locations. Where's the, is there individual mail locations? Or is there a centralized mail location?
I don't know that we have a choice anymore with the post office. It's going to be a centralized location.
The central post office requires it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they don't, they won't do door-to-door now. New developments, it has to be centralized.
Okay.
Yeah, so that is not called out on here.
We would probably add that adjacent to the community center where the parking is.
Got it.
That way they can pull in and park and get to the mail kiosk.
Got it. Thank you.
Another question with, that I'll allow Mr. Ball to jump in on as well. Will these roads have curb and gutter included?
I don't, I don't believe so. They're probably going to be an inverted pavement.
Okay.
They're private, so obviously, we're going to maintain them. But there'll be an inverted pavement with a storm sewer going down through, through the middle.
So it's in the middle is where the storm drain will be.
Right.
Got it. Okay.
Can I tag onto that? So I, when reading through your plans, you're not going to have a sidewalk here, is that correct?
There will be, if you.
Well, the plan say a three-foot asphalt lane that's divided by a line, is that correct?
Yes. And I don't, I don't know that we've decided whether that's going to be asphalt and striped, or whether it'd be an actual concrete, but that, that meets the ADA guidelines as far as is providing accessible routes into the, into the buildings.
I understand that. The bulk of my job is actually as the municipal prosecutor for the county, for the entire county.
Okay.
And so one of the things that's been coming up recently are pedestrian car deaths. And so I was concerned about having the pedestrians on the same level with cars without any separation. You know, a yellow line striped on the asphalt is probably not going to provide a lot of protection. And so, especially in a community that we're aiming out for 55 and older, I was wondering if, if it might be better to do concrete sidewalks to get the people up off the road. That's just something that I noticed when I was reviewing the plans earlier today.
We'd be willing to look at that and see if that's, will work.
Thank you. Mr. Ball, do you have?
You had a question about the roads, so.
Yeah, as long as the curb and gutter, in addition to that, if that works with our, you know, stormwater plans for this particular area.
Right, so if they don't intend to turn them over to become city streets, they don't have to beat our asphalt thickness and the standards. You know, typically, our roads would be crowned instead of inverted. So they don't have to meet our standards if they don't intend to hand it over. The only place they need to meet our standards would be at the entrance where we would be connecting, you know, the street opening to the site.
We, I mean, if you want, we would probably wrap those with curb returns back in.
Yeah.
If with your improvements to Upper Gilchrist, the sidewalk's part of that. So we would act, we would make that look like a, like a city intersection, I guess, the transition from there.
Yeah, and, and sometimes with stormwater, if you're not dealing with sidewalks, it works to have the stormwater exit the road and go to grass. It actually reduces the need and the size of the stormwater pond. But you really want the curb for safety for the pedestrians, have that separation for.
The intent is we show two stormwater ponds, and they're, they're going to be designed to the city's, city standards on that. That's, that's not an issue.
What kind of a guarantee do the residents? So if you're not going to build, if it's going to be a private road, and it's going to be built not to city standards, and you're driving garbage trucks on it, for example, the road will deteriorate faster. So how, what is your plan?
Our, our roads may be the city standard, are not going to be very much less than that, because to your point, they're built to, to deal with, one, we're going to, to build all those units, we're going to bring a lot of construction vehicles in there. So the road has to be built to withstand that burden. After that, the garbage trucks and delivery trucks, and so the pavement thickness will be, will be thick enough to handle that.
Okay, because generally.
They get mad at me at five years after they're in there. They got to go out and start replacing the pavement and stuff as part of their maintenance, so.
Generally, in a construction zone, you have a base layer, and then fill it later. But I'm just curious as to, if I were a resident, how quickly would it deteriorate, the road?
I mean, our, our plans aren't for it to deteriorate any quicker and standard of what, what you normally see out there. We build a lot of these communities with private streets, and, and they, they all last just as long as public streets.
One of the things that we design differently is like, we're, you know, in other neighborhoods, what do we have, six garbage companies? So like my neighborhood, trash truck comes on Tuesday, trash truck comes on Friday. School bus is through there. If you have one trash truck, one snowplow, I mean, that, that's, that's where the difference is.
Well, so where I live, we also have a private, and we don't allow the big trucks in. You have to bring, you don't, you don't get the six axle. So you get the.
Where I live, we get the six axle three days a week.
The hopper in the back, and then they got to keep coming back. So we pay a little bit extra for that, but that's a way that, that would be up to the, to the development to figure that out.
And the mayor's subdivision has the catch bases in the center of the street. It's a preference. ODOT doesn't allow that. We tend to lean more toward ODOT standards. So we pay partly because we've got wants of catch basin on both sides, so we have double the number of catch basins that they would typically have.
Yeah. We also, no, we don't have the streets or the name of the, the, of the area identified yet, which is something that we would require too. So I don't know if you have that information.
It's one of the hardest things for me to get from my development team. To be honest, for them to pick a name and street names, huh? Seems like it'd be the easiest, but it's something that's usually the hardest to get. So I don't know if you can answer that, Patrick, or.
If you knew Bill Lemon, it would make a lot sense. No, I mean, there's been a bunch, we, basically, once we go through, we look for a community name. Bill Lemon takes pride in picking them out. And then we run it through to make sure that, one, it's available, and then kind of see what, you know, negative or positive connotations, you know, derive from that. So there's been a few that have been thrown out, and then we've done the researching, no, it doesn't make sense, or we don't like, just don't like the feel of it. So there's several that are in the works right now, we're looking into, but we will have that picked out, you know, I'm sure by city council. If, if you want it by then, I can have a definitive answer by then. But yeah, it's a process, because our CEO, Bill Lemon, likes to take a lot of pride in it.
Yeah.
Ms. John, can I attest?
Yes. Is, is there a 911 requirement? I assume we can't duplicate a street name in the city. Does that also apply to the county, or is it just within the corporation of the city?
We have duplicate names in the county.
You prefer not to, but.
Like Stark County, they don't allow a duplicate name anywhere in the county, whether you're incorporated or not.
Prefer you don't do that.
Right.
We can say, you're, you're technically in the county and in the city.
Right.
This is a type 2 annexation, so I'm guessing, just don't do it.
We believe in you. You're creative guys.
Like I say, typically, the names he picks are unique, and so that shouldn't be a problem, but that's, I don't want to submit a bunch of names and find out that they conflict with the county, or, so.
Building setback lines. Wasn't sure if they were identified or not.
They are on there, but they're probably not called out. If you look at the, the goal is to have a 25-foot minimum driveway length.
What, 25 foot?
25 foot.
Driveway?
Minimum driveway from the edge of pavement to the front of the garage. Lot of, lot of folks try to submit 20-foot driveways, and to be honest, my pickup truck doesn't fit in the 20-foot driveway, so we try to make them at least 25.
All right. Mr. Brown, did you, was there?
No, we're looking at what they're, what they have is there. It says 25 TYP, so that's the typical.
Yes.
But it's not the actual, they didn't actually provide the setback.
Okay.
We can, would you like us to add that, if we would move forward?
That is one of the items included on the preliminary plot checklist. That is one of the items included on the preliminary plat checklist.
Okay, absolutely.
Who did the survey?
It's, right now it's a survey of record.
Okay.
Which they, I think when they did this, the project to the south, this parcel was part of an overall parcel, so the survey's current with it. We use the, the legal description of record for that.
Okay. So what else? No profiles or cross-sections. Mrs. Blankenhorn, can you explain what that, what you meant by that in your report?
It's part of the preliminary plat checklist that's included in city code. It's typically provided for the streets and then another one is for the sanitary sewer and water lines. Are all required to be part of a preliminary plat.
Right. Any news on those items also?
We can, we can add the water in the sewer. I don't, I defer to Brian, is cross-sections more typical for a public street than, than a private or you don't differentiate?
Your, your sewer can't be a private sewer.
No.
So you have to have those.
Okay.
Depending on how you decide to deal with the water, it may be public or private.
Right.
So we would need those. I guess, are we doing plat and development plan or just development plan?
Well, one of the requirements of the comprehensive development plan is a preliminary plat conforming to the subdivision regulations and including at least 20% of the total acreage included in the comprehensive development plan.
Yeah, just to clarify for everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Why we need that.
Yeah, we don't, we don't go through the preliminary plan process. It's rolled into the comprehensive plan as a requirement.
Not plan, I think it's, you have the plan and the plat are sewn together.
Well, they have submitted for a comprehensive development plan, but part of that is a preliminary plat. And so there's a checklist for it and not all the items are addressed.
Okay.
Yeah, we just want to make sure people are reading on the same sheet of music of why we are going down this line of questioning.
Okay.
Yep.
We can, we can add those items, absolutely.
Okay. Mrs. Blankenhorn, were there any other things that, that interest from your report as it relates to what's required by the code, the zoning code or the state?
I think you covered everything.
Okay. Does anyone have any other questions for John or Patrick at this time? And we'll move on and if you guys want to just hang tight, we'll, we may have some other questions for you later on, so. Is there anybody else who's speaking in support of this particular proposal? Is there anyone speaking in opposition of this proposal? Is there anyone, you weren't speaking in opposition?
I think there's people who want to speak, whether it's for or against, they just, like they-
I just want, well, the next one is speaking in general about this. Almost you were ahead of me there, Mike. Anyway, okay. Ernie, come on, yeah, come on up, Mr. Pido, and we'll have you read the, swear on the testimony there and floor will be yours.
Just so I understand, I was writing down a couple of these questions here and I know there's a time allotment here, so I didn't know if you want me to ask one at a time and then get back up or-
Well, we'll have, we'll have, we'll have you do it for four minutes. If there are other people who want to speak, we'll let them speak and then we'll have you come back after. If you would read that statement first, that would be great.
My name is Ernest Pido, my address is 12160 Upper Gilcrest Road in Mount Vernon, Ohio. I affirm that my testimony is truthful to the best of my knowledge, am I reading the right one by the way? And ability, so help me God, or under penalty of perjury.
If you wouldn't mind just pulling the microphone a little bit closer there. Okay, it's yours, floor's yours.
Thank you. I had a, a number of questions that were coming up, just to reconfirm. I think the contractors or builders saying you were using natural material. So my question was, does this include vinyl siding and things like that? I was just curious on the material. And the roof pitch you said was not 412, but you didn't state what the roof pitch was. These are general ones, I'll get to more important ones at the time, so. If you can just comment it when you get back up, that'd be fine. You talked about sidewalks, but you also said that there were paths, so if there are no sidewalks, how are individuals from 50 to 60 or up in age to get from their house to the walking paths, if that's what they are? My assumption is based on what I understood was they would have to walk in the road. And it goes back to the safety element of all of this. So I was trying to connect sidewalks to walking paths and pickleball courts and how people get to one place or another. I was also curious to know how this development transitions with the other developments that are currently being built. And this goes back to, is there privacy trees or fences or any type of separation? Or do they just run into all the other developments that- He agrees with this question, so that was a question on how they are partitioned and so forth. And I was wondering if there was any ordinances on these rentals with regards to parking on streets? And maybe this is out of, not the time and place for it, but I'll just ask. Is there ordinances to make sure that the development and whoever's managing it does not become overrun with many cars parked on the streets instead of in the sidewalks or campers or trailers or trucks or workshops and things like that? I mean, I don't imagine there can be based on the size, but I was just wondering what the general ordinances were for the maintaining of this property by whoever's going to do that. I think that's all I had, these were all more questions.
Do you want to address those questions? Why don't you go ahead and just address those questions right now then? Yeah, thanks, Ernie, appreciate it. We've got the material, the roof pitch, the sidewalks, parking, campers, trailers and trucks is what I wrote down. Is that, is that accurate, Ernie?
That's right, and the sidewalks.
Sidewalks, yeah, I got, yeah, I got sidewalks.
Natural materials, there, there will be vinyl siding and this is part of it, but you know, it's going to be a mixture of, of wood, vinyl and stone or brick.
And the roof pitch, you, you addressed that, but would you just repeat what the roof pitch is?
I, to be honest, I, I don't know 100% what it is.
Patrick, do you remember, recall?
I don't know if it shows on our drawings or not.
On the drawings, it looks pretty-
I can, I can tell you the, like, it's not, those aren't 412, looking at the front.
All right.
They're, they're probably, I mean, they're probably 612 or steeper.
And the sidewalks or the paths you get to and from, that was one of the other things that Mr. Pido had asked about. We talked a little bit about that earlier, but if you want to-
All the streets will have the, on one side, this path or sidewalk, whatever we end up with for, for pedestrian.
Okay.
And, you know, part of the reality is, I mean, I live on a street that's a township road and people walk on the streets. So I mean, it's, huh? We can, we can give them a designated area to walk and still have them, more of them will walk on the street or somewhere else other than that.
So are you saying one side of the street will have path?
A path, yeah.
The other thing that came up was parking and then also the issue of campers, trailers and trucks and stuff like that, so it's-
You know, I can, I can let Patrick answer that, but I can-
Probably not.
The, the communities that they manage, that, that is, that's not going to be a concern.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, as far as parking, one, the plan shows 528 spaces for 156 units, so I think that's plentiful. As far as ordinances, I mean, we can talk more about that, but again-
It's all private property, I mean, the city parking ordinances wouldn't apply.
Is there, is there a condition in your lease?
I think it probably goes by, can you, by community, depending what type of community it is. But I mean, if it's something that we all want us to consider, we can look into that. It really varies by community and type of community that we're looking for.
Okay.
One of the questions that was asked was how would this transition into the other property or the other development? Is there any plan for any sort of- And, and, and other private properties?
Well, one, I mean, we have a landscaping plan that shows some buffering around. As far as the Rockford Homes project, there's been some communication with them, but you know, they're set on their development plan and they're facing strategy. And that's theirs, so I mean, whether, other than landscaping, buffering around there, it's not going to flow one way or the other.
Okay.
Yeah, they have buffering too, so they'll be kind of a, on the south, they're, this project's south. They have, Rockford has a planting plan with buffering that was approved as being, you see, and they'll construct it, that's, they're following their plan, so.
If, if they were public streets and a, you know, standard allotment, I'm sure code requires us to provide a street access to the neighbors. This, these being private, they're, I don't think that's a requirement and it kind of forces two individuals to, you know, share, who's going, who's going to main act, uh, maintenance and stuff if it is shared, so that, that's not shown on the plan.
Okay.
So with, real quick, with the private property, is there any plan, and I believe the last time we discussed with, even with the rezone, there was an individual in here that was concerned about light pollution or not coming from a, a unit into his property. Is that the plan to landscape around that in any sort of way?
Yeah, I mean, I believe the landscaping plan shows considerable buffering specifically for the residents that had mentioned it at the zoning process. I mean, I think you'll see that just in the plan itself, there's a lot of space around the perimeters now with added basin as well, so.
Let me see, the, the image that's up does show the, the shade trees, shows the current trees and any of the other landscaping, I think, so. That has, that has been something that has gone, um, Mr. Ball, I don't know, has this gone to shade tree yet? Or is, what is it, at what point is there involvement in?
At this point, the ordinance doesn't, they're not plotting, they're not plotting it as a public street, so I don't know that they're under the current rules. It does not have to go to shade tree under the current rules. There is, I mean, this, this would be, it has a good number of trees, I think it would, I haven't looked at it, I haven't counted the trees, but it would probably meet the rules if they were plotting the road, it would be close to that.
Okay.
Ms. Blankenhorn has pulled up the planning map and that they added, this is at, at Upper Gilcrest and to the north of the property is the one, one of the close neighbors. They added additional plantings as well as a berm in there.
Got it.
To deal with concerns that are raised at the, at the rezoning process.
Thank you. Thank you. Sir, you wanted to speak in general about this?
I'd like to prepare what I answered my question on about the buffer zone between this and the neighbors.
Okay. Does anybody else wish to speak in general? Yes, Mr. Mayhem. We'll have you read that statement there, please.
Yes, sir, my name is James Mayhem, my address is 226 Delano Street. I affirm that my testimony is truthful to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God, under penalty of perjury. Folks, you know I'm on city council, represent the first ward, but one of the things that ADF has been encouraging us to think of is beyond the car. And so I encourage, when this comes to council, I think at least I would like to see, and I think other members of council would like to see, kind of the thought for how are we going to get non-automotive traffic across Gilcrest Road, out, out of the development, across Gilcrest Road and then possibly onto the Koshakton Road? Whether it be, you know, pedestrian traffic, bicycle traffic or some other kind of non-automotive traffic. You know, just kind of, how is this going to link in to what else is going on at Koshakton Road? At least I would like to see that, so. And if there's an answer to that now, that'd be awesome, or if, if we could just see that before it comes to council, that'd be great. Thank you.
So, yeah, council, city council's authorized us to enter into contract with GPD groups to, which is different, different acronym. Not this group, but a different group that has a three-letter name with D's and D's in it. So we are, we are designing a new Upper Gilcrest Road that would include a bike, bike trail on the east side where the heavy residential work is and a sidewalk on the west side where Schleybaugh and Stoneworks are continuing active development. And this would include, most likely would include curb and gutter drainage features. Because honestly, the township road doesn't probably meet our standards now. So it's hard to talk to people about meeting standards when our road and the township road doesn't meet our standards. So that's something that council's authorized, the contract's partly funded and will be fully funded at the passage of the budget if it's included.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak in general about this project? Mr. Hillier?
My name is Michael P. Hillier, my address is 215 East Sugar Street. I affirm that my testimony is truthful to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God, or under penalty of perjury. Thank you for allowing me to be here, I'm here as a resident. Highlighted trash pickup is one of the conversations. I'm not sure I like the answer yet. Mayor, if you remember, regional planning, one of the things that Hillier Township talked about was having projects built just like they're going to be in the Village of Centerburg because they feel sometimes has what's happened in the past. Projects fall through and the city has to take over, so they want to build at city standards. I hear a lot of things here that aren't quite a city standard such as the streets and curbs. I'm not sure I like that idea real well. I assume, before I get back to trash, that we've looked at all these streets and we can be sure fire truck squads can get in and out without a problem. I didn't hear that brought up. Back to the trash, I know the Eastern Star went to a dumpster situation. Their apartments as well. Lacy, if I'm not mistaken, I think Rockford Homes is dumpsters. We have other, with several apartment units with dumpsters. One of the things that ensures is without a homeowners association or, or anything of the type, one of the things the city of Mount Vernon has right now is people love to leave the trash cans out. So unless that's actually written in the lease and the city of Mount Vernon makes sure it's abided to, I could see, these are rental properties, these are 55 years and older. I have, I can point out several of those in the city of Mount Vernon that rent and don't think their trash can needs to leave the curb. So I think I'd think real hard on that one there, because you're talking a lot of density, a lot of people right there together. You know, four or five trash cans in there, it looks pretty, pretty bad pretty quick. The, it was touched on about the CRA and NCA, there hasn't been an agreement yet. I didn't hear all that conversation, but I heard we're working on it. As somebody on city council who worked very hard on those two projects, I think that's something I'd like to see the city pursue very hard, that that is part of this contract before it's ever signed. You've got Upper Gilcrest Road, it's going to be picking up. I know we've got funds that we're going to redo Upper Gilcrest Road, but that also would help ensure that that road's going to be taken care of. You're looking at additional another 400 vehicles, garbage trucks, delivery trucks, semis. Those are just, and I hear a lot of, yeah, we're probably going to do it that way, this should be, I assume you're not going to approve this tonight. Thank you.
Any response from Patrick or John?
We're going trash pickup. Again, this will be managed by Brooklyn Management, all maintenance is managed by our organization. As far, you know, we'll have onsite property manager, onsite property manager, sorry. So if there is issues, you know, if people aren't adhering to the standards of their lease agreements, there's repercussions for that. As far, you know, as far as other communities having dumpsters, again, I think it's a little, it's situation by situation. You know, Rockford Homes is 496 units, this is considerably less. So I mean, I think there's different things to consider when it comes to that.
It's, you're, you're right, and I will say, like, where, where I, we have, we have an HOA where I live and so they're very sticklers about pulling the trash cans back in and everything, yeah. Yeah. Right.
In a way they do, they have a, they're going to have a management, they have management onsite.
So does other apartment complexes.
We can't have the gallery speaking without being on mic.
Okay, sorry, yeah. Anyway, so yeah, I know there, there are different developments. Okay, sorry. Yeah. Anyway, so yeah, I know there, there are different developments that have different options that, we'll just take a look at those two. So anyway, yeah. Yeah, go right ahead. Come back on up.
I understand they have a management, but I also understand we have other apartment complexes, City of Mount Vernon have management. I also understand management changes. So that is something we've gotta be keeping in mind when we talk it's gonna be managed. The same thing we did with Rockford Homes when they talked about their management. We asked exactly what their management was gonna do, and I think as much as it can be written into their lease with their management would help.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak in general about this particular project? Yeah, would you come in and we'll have you read the statement there before you speak?
My name is Marsha Kelso. I live at 12848 Upper Gilcrest Road. I affirm that my testimony is truthful to the best of my knowledge and ability to help me God under penalty of perjury. So help me God.
Welcome.
Um, like Mr. Hilliard said, this is a lot of maybes, but nothing is, is this wrote down anywhere? I mean, this is a private group and not the city working with it? I don't quite understand that. So is this, were you gonna say something there, sir?
No, I'm sorry. Well, this is, this is a site development plan proposal that comes before this particular, we basically are making a recommendation, or not making a recommendation, to city council based on what we, we have, or we can, we also can table this as well if we, if we do not have satisfactory answers to the questions that we have before here. But we basically make the recommendation at this, at this point to city council as to the approval or the disapproval of it, and then it will go to city council for a public hearing and three readings probably and so forth. So that's where we are in this particular.
Point of it.
Point of it, yeah.
Because like they were saying about the trucks, boats and that type of stuff. And when I was at one of the other meetings, when Lemon was talking, they were saying that they're the ones that put the, behind Bob Evans, the old folks home over there, Danbury. And if you drive through Danbury, there is a group, a house there that they have so much stuff that it is outside. They have a canoe outside, they have, all that stuff is, you know, on their property, but it is still there. And if we're gonna have 108 villas and 48 units, who, who is gonna be managing this? I mean, that, that is our concern. We live there. The road is already being, you know, is the City of Mount Vernon gonna take the road over and, and start making it better? I mean, our road is already being demolished because of the other sleigh ball stuff going on. They don't come off of Koshakton, they come down from Page Road and come around. I mean, I see them. You know, today, I, I went home to let my dogs out and one of the sleigh ball trucks was zooming right by. I mean, if anything would have been on the road, it would have been flattened. I mean, it was a red truck. It said, you know, it said stuff on it, so you know who it was. I'm just, you know, where's, where's all this? Are we gonna actually keep an eye on it and get it under control? Is the city gonna do that?
Well, as far as the roads in the development, this is, it's a private property development.
It's a private place.
So, and what's being proposed.
So they can do what they want?
The roads are not going to be city roads. They will be maintained by the, the management, correct, Patrick?
But what about to that? Because they're putting this in down and up is where they're gonna be putting their entrance in, so we're still gonna be how far.
Well, yeah, we, so we, we are in the design process of a complete reconstruction of Upper Gilcrest to the northernmost limit of the city. So on the east, or on the west side, the last little piece of sleigh ball, we would reconstruct the road to that point. After that point, it's not our jurisdiction. This, this property is in the city and in the township, so the township will be getting tax money, the real estate tax money, and they can use that to improve the road north of the city limit. We don't have a jurisdiction north of our, our limit. But we would rebuild the road using the tax increment finance district and potentially the other programs that Mr. Mike Hilliard helps create to improve the road. The company is under contract and they are working to get the design done.
Will that design be done before these guys start or this is approved? I guess not before they start, but before we approve it, you guys approve it?
So they are funded, we, we are working in interim appropriations, so we have funded them through the middle of the year. If the city budget passes on Monday, we will fully fund that project and they would have the design most likely done before this is in the permitting phase, yes. But if the city budget, if that's eliminated from the budget, then I don't know. So the, the city is working to get there.
Okay.
They have a strong commitment from the city council to make sure this happens, but I'm not on city council, that's.
Right. Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak in general about the project? Counselor, councilman in training here.
Hi, my name is Jim Stalka. My address is 12,000 Upper Gilcrest Road, right on the edge of Mount Vernon. I affirm that my testimony is truthful to the best of my knowledge and the ability, so help me God, or under penalty of perjury. So I guess I heard one of you guys mentioned kind of on the, the street there where Mount Vernon's line stops. This project is in Mount Vernon, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So where does that road that enters Upper Gilcrest come out at?
That is, well.
Where is the exact location that that exits to Upper Gilcrest or enters?
What I think we need to say is this is a plan, so this is not a permit document. So if the plan is approved, they will have to provide the detailed drawings and they would have to provide the detailed location of the entrances, the water lines, the sewer lines.
Correct.
This is an approximation.
Oh, I get that. Yeah, I understand. You might not be able to tell me, but I mean, we, it can add fruit for thought that is this gonna come out on the city property? How much is this gonna affect those four houses that are really just been beaten up by all of the development around it that we have purchased to be in the country and away from people? And not necessarily to be rude, but now we've got massive developments going all around us and one here is completely islanded by the entire situation, and that is just terribly wrong for Mount Vernon. I mean, that's, I mean, that's the worst thing you could possibly do. I mean, what if I just built a moat all the way around your house? That's terrible. But, I mean, I feel that during all of the projects through this, none of our words have been heard. The three-lane road that they're prospecting, I've got stakes all in my yard right now. I've got a young one, and 10 feet to that road is huge to me. I mean, that's, that's a matter of if he bolts out the door for some god knows reason, the latch breaks on the door and that's 10 foot for me. I'm cool with that. I, I would enjoy my extra 10 foot. But anything that pertains to this property and the construction of Upper Gilcrest needs to be taken out of Upper, or Mount Vernon roads if you're entered taking the roads. And when it comes to Monroe Township, I don't think any of that should be touched or handled. I shouldn't lose any frontage. I shouldn't have to deal with three-lane roads now in front of my, in my, in front of my house. I have a camper and a truck that I could park perfectly in my driveway. Anything three lanes, not gonna happen, because I guarantee you're not gonna move telephone poles, you're not gonna cut into that ditch on the one side of the hill that's on their property. You're gonna take it out of the easy side, which would be the flat side, which would be all of ours people that live in that road. So I mean, I'm, I'm not appreciative of how Mount Vernon has handled any of our situations. Anything that we've brought up has just been basically patouey. I don't know with the development further up the road across the street, what happened with the firehouse there. Cause I know when I first came into the meeting about that, there was an issue with, it seemed like plans had already been worked out for a firehouse off of a chunk of that same property that is adjacent to this. And it's like, oh, well what are we voting on here? Something that Mount Vernon's already made their mind up because we've got location for a possible firehouse? You know, I mean, there's just some things that didn't seem like it was very up and up. You know what I mean? And I don't know if that's true, but it just seemed as though that was my perspective on it from what was delivered during that first meeting. I understand we need the growth, but I think if we can make everybody happy, if we looked at it in a different aspect of, okay, it's gonna be private, it's something special that they're doing, why not turn that and make an access road from the road that's already there? You've got plenty of room to make a three-lane road all the way up by that entrance that's already there on the adjacent property, make an access road to this from there. And then that's limiting your access to Upper Gilcrest and making it so that way, we're not getting rights in our house every time someone goes in and out of there. Cause depending on where you put that, that's exactly what's gonna happen. I mean, I don't wanna be, his bedroom faces that road.
Okay.
But fruit for thought there if, you know, there could be something that could make the Monroe Township people at least feel like that they're, they mean, they mean something or the above would be fantastic. And I know it's more of a complaint than, but I don't have quarrels with what's being put in. I don't have quarrels with their business. I just wish that our property and our way of life that we've had before this can at least maintain somewhat of a similarity to what, you know, what we had purchased. But thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak in general about this project? Come on up. To be noted, just for the record, that Mrs. Blankenhorn needed to leave for another function, and so April is here to take her place. So thank you for subbing in, April.
My name is Claudia Pido. My address is 12160 Upper Gilcrest Road in Mount Vernon. I affirm that my testimony is truthful to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God, or under penalty or perjury. I know my husband had an opportunity to speak. We purchased land about 13 years ago for the whole out-of-the-city experience, and yet I have to agree with the gentleman prior to me, we want our privacy. And I, I understand growth and development. I understand revenue. However, if it could be considered in their plans along the tree line, that back tree line bumps up against a lot of our property as well, planting pine trees, a double layer of pine trees back there to reduce noise instead of shade trees. We already have trees in the, in our property, but it would be nice if they had a thicker barrier of pine trees. I don't know if that could be done or considered, but it would help us still have our privacy and our land that we worked hard for. And that's all I have to say. I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak in general?
My name is Ron Cheats from 12067 Upper Gilcrest. My property is the last one. I affirm that my testimony is truthful to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God, under penalty of perjury. My property is the last one up on north Upper Gilcrest. I'm right across from Neil. And we were wondering, I'm not particularly excited about where that road's coming out. And we're really concerned about how the road is gonna be designed. I know you're not addressing that in this particular forum, but if that expansion goes over to the other side, we're gonna lose all kinds of trees. Just a lot of things, you know, especially Jimmy, he's gonna wind up with a postage stamp driveway down there. And I was wondering if this development, I mean, I know it's important to the city and it's, a lot of people can find residence there and it'll be a nice community, but why can't we expand the road on the developer's side? I know there's ups and downs to that, but that would really, that would really help. Help the, help the, the feeling of working together at least anyway, you know, to take that land, it's on the developer's side. There's room there. I know there's poles there, but there's a lot of things on our side too, you know? And, you know, we're worried about the upkeep of the road. We're a little bit upset that Monroe Township didn't step up and represent themselves a little better here in this, in this development. But that's some of our concerns and like Jimmy said, we, we'd like to maintain as much rural community as we can, and it's, that's, that's fast, probably not going to happen, but we'd like as much consideration as possible. And I thank you.
I see both Mr. Mackey and Mr. Walsh taking notes here too. So anyway, I believe they are listening to the Monroe Township representation here. Anybody else wish to speak in general about this?
Maybe a note. So when, when Rockford was here, they offered the real estate for the bike path on their property. So the comments are paralleled, I think, to the Rockford development, so that the construction of the path will be on, will be a slice out of their property. So that agreement's already been made with Rockford. So, yeah, there's quite a bit of utility work in this, but I think this is something we definitely would, would consider pushing more to the east, cause that's what we're doing with Rockford. So we haven't had those conversations because this is, we're at the beginning.
Uh, Mr. Ball, while you're on, are there any other engineering concerns that you have at this particular point in time?
Well, similar to your statement at the beginning, we are not offering any variances for stormwater. They have to meet the, all of the EPA standards, all the city standards in the center-run watershed. We don't offer any variances of any sort, and we explain clearly at the beginning on the record that we don't offer those. We will also be doing a post-construction survey inspection requiring as-built and certified plans that these meet what is going to be permitted. So just want that on the record that, you know, we haven't had any issues in center-run. We have had issues in other places where people have not wished to follow the rules, and so we're just making it clear upfront that we follow the rules.
April, I don't know if Lacey has any other communications or anything that were received prior to this. Mr. Boren, maybe you might be able to help out here? Either through phone calls or in writing?
She would have him printed out if he did.
No, there's nothing else.
Thank you. Okay. You said again, this is private property, so shade tree is not necessarily at this point in where our code is.
It's not going to be a, a platted subdivision. So our code is enforced on subdivisions. This will be plat, but it won't be a subdivision.
Thank you.
But again, I believe they've, have not counted the trees, but they're going to meet the intent of that generally. So.
Look, from the, from the, the drawing, it did look like that. So, yeah. The rendering, sorry. Mr. Boren, do you have any legal concerns at this particular point in time that would delay this?
Yes, your honor. Yes, Mr. Mayor.
You've been, you've been hanging around the court too long, haven't you?
I would note, as Ms. Blankenhorn pointed out, that they have failed to meet a number of the issues on the preliminary plat checklist. And until those issues are resolved and information provided, it is my opinion that municipal planning cannot move forward with consideration of the, of the development plan.
Okay. Okay, that brings us to, this is a recommend, this would be a recommendation to council if we decide to proceed right now. The chair will entertain a motion at this particular point in time so we can get it on the table to discuss.
I motion that we table this proposal to the next regular meeting.
I'll second.
I moved in second to table this to the next meeting to give you some time to, any discussion, I'm sorry, any discussion on this.
We want to make sure that we have plenty of time for you guys to address these concerns and to take the community's concerns into consideration. That way, when this commission... and to take the community's concerns into consideration, that way when this commission recommends this to council, everything is nice and tied up, and council can answer their questions and the community's good and taken care of.
Okay, well, this is, this is. Second Thursday of the month at 4:00 up here, thank you, yeah. Okay. Is there any other discussion? The motion is to table this until the next meeting. Please call the roll.
Mayor Starr?
Yes.
Mr. Sayers?
Yes.
Ms. Osworth?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Swallow?
Yes.
The motion stands, so it will be tabled until the next meeting. Any other business for today? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Just so we're clear, that's going to be March 7th, Thursday, March 7th at 4:00 p.m.
Thursday, March 7th at 4:00 p.m. will be the next, will be the next meeting, thank you very much. Okay, so it's motioned, it's been moved and seconded for adjournment, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We are adjourned, thank you all.
The 7th?
It's the first one. We need to have it.
Oh, it's the 8th, sorry, it's the 8th. Wait, I'm sorry, no.
No, it's the 14th.
14th.
The first is on a Friday. So the 7th is the first.
So the 14th, yeah.